I marked up the copy of that. That was part of the.
Yes.
Right.
It's exciting.
Talking government.
Still.
But they're, they're gonna have some work.
The regiment.
She's.
I don't take any questions, but it says, it sounds great.
Just.
We want Rob, so we don't have to do that.
Is that.
But like, we looked down their review.
Did we figure out a way to have? Other people on the screen or are we just gonna have? I can't remember what we decided. Was last week. Cause last time was our.
Oh, listen.
I'm Scott Hess, the new planning director.
Long body over there.
I was. So. I'm a major race for Harvard.
They're a genius.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start. Uh, welcome to tonight's North Ogden Planning Commission meeting. I'm Chairman Thomas, will be conducting tonight. This is the May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission being held both virtually and in person. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation or thought by Commissioner Webb, followed by being led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Warner. Commissioner Webb.
Our Father in Heaven, we're very grateful to meet here together as members of North Ogden City. We're grateful for the many, many blessings that we have to live in such a beautiful place and so many people who are interested in creating better community. We ask how it's blessed this evening that we might listen and understand one another and continue to make plans for the citizens of North Ogden and the families who who live here. These things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will make note, I can't see, but I'm assuming Brandon and Barker are here with us online.
Yes.
All right, we'll make note that all are in attendance tonight. We will now read our opening meeting statement. Before each agenda item begins, city staff will get a report. After the staff report, the item will be opened for other speakers. The applicant will speak first and be allowed up to ten minutes. Following the applicant, any other interested person will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes. The applicant has final rebuttal time of up to five minutes. Any materials that are displayed or referenced, e.g. pictures or written materials, a part of the record must be left with the commission. Speakers are required to have signed in at the door and will state their name and address before beginning their remarks. If you agree with the previous speaker, then state your agreement to avoid repetitious remarks. Also, if you're attending on Zoom, required to register your full name on Zoom and state likewise when you address us. Speakers shall address the commission from the podium or microphone and shall address all comments to the planning commission. All right, do we have any ex parte communications or conflicts tonight on our one agenda item? Commissioners? All right. Well, we'll now open up for public comments for anything on the, that is not on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to address the planning commission, please step up to the mic or raise your hand if you're on Zoom and we'll let you speak to the commission. We'll do so at this time.
We do not have anyone online.
Okay. Well, we'll move on. Already to you. Our administrative items, I guess at this point we'll. Are you presenting to us? Okay, Brandon is. Well, so tonight we do have with us Scott Hess, our new planning director. So Scott, if you'll, before we start item number five and let Brandon give us the introduction of this item, maybe if you'd like to stand and tell the commission a little bit about yourself and how excited you are to be in North Ogden.
So excited, yeah, thank you. So I'm Scott Hess, new planning director. I started last Monday, so this is week number two. Rob isn't joining tonight, but he's still taking on a couple of items, so he's gonna continue on the code rewrite as well as the hillside protection ordinance that was tabled at city council last week. So really looking forward to it and thank everybody for this opportunity. I've been in planning since two thousand seven. I worked now at Davis County, Clearfield City, lost that regional council very short time as a community development director in the Oregon coast and and now I'm here. So I'm looking forward to it. You know, lived and raised in Davis County and know this area well, so it'll be great.
Great career stuff now look, dig a little more personal. Are you married? Do you have family?
So I'm married, I've got three little kids, all girls, and I've got five-year-old twins and an almost two-year-old, so lots of, lots of pink in our house and all the kids' toys that you can imagine, two of everything through for all the ages. So if your kids need, you can let us know.
That's great. We're excited to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to our only agenda item tonight. Item number five, subdivision ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero one. Consideration in action on an administrative application for final approval of the Northview Estate subdivision phase eight. Forty-five lots located at approximately forty-two hundred north and one hundred east. Presenter will be Brandon Bell. Brandon?
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. So this is a forty-five lot subdivision. The current zoning is HP one. The area of the project is about eighteen point eight acres. It's a residential subdivision, single-family residential. And then I'll go ahead and read the administrative decision type statement for this. When the planning commission is acting as a landy's authority, is act, it is acting in an administrative capacity and has limited discretion. Examples of administrative applications are conditional use permits, designer reviews and subdivisions. Administrative applications must be approved by the planning commission if the application demonstrates compliance with the approval criteria. This received preliminary, this subdivision received preliminary approval in March of this year. It's located approximately forty-two hundred north and one hundred east. And the technical review committee met on February second of this year and provided requirements for the subdivision. And then the city engineers submitted his latest memo for the project on May fifth, which is included in your exhibits. One note about that is that the engineer requested that, I just notify you that it's labeled on the report as preliminary, but it actually is a final report addressing final approval for the subdivision from an engineer's perspective and requirements for final. The HP one zone, we do have a will cert letter and for secondary water and for central sewer sewer as well. The HP one zone requires a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet on interior and corner lots with a width requirement of ninety square, or ninety feet. The lots in the proposed subdivision each been verified to meet the required square footage and lot width requirements for this zone. And there is one area where the block length requirement's not able to be enforced due to development on the other side of the block that's already incurred. And so it would just create a stubble street where we didn't put that in. The applicant has also added a through street to the block between forty-two hundred and forty-one hundred north. Can you, would you be able to pull up exhibit B more, give a little more detail on that? And preliminary came up that there was a block being proposed. There'll have a red and blue line on it. That's how you'd be reckoned. That there was a block that was being created partly by the subdivision, but not fully in this phase of the subdivision. The the western section of this block up on the screen that's has the red lines going through the center of it is most of what's in the subdivision and that and more of the eastern section is is in a future phase. Well, we were able to identify that that block were to be designed as and and approved as they currently or as it previously was, would exceed the block length requirement for our city. And so we, it was a requirement of preliminary approval that they put it through a street, which they did. And so that it's now within the block length requirements. I believe the western block will be about eight hundred and twenty feet of the, or sorry, maybe eight hundred and fifty feet, and then the eastern would be about eight hundred and twenty feet. So we appreciate the applicant's willingness to adjust the plan to meet that requirement. As has been discussed previously, when this subdivision was considered for preliminary approval, this was, this area that the subdivision is is being considered for is a critical area with regards to the city's trail network. There's only a lot or two that in this that addresses mountain road, but the city staff has been working to get a final design for mountain road in this area. That final design will include bike lanes on both sides of the street, a trail on the north side and a five-foot sidewalk on the south side. The the entire right-of-way design will be consistent along all unconstructed portions of mountain road. And again, that design is being finalized, but we know that those elements could be present in the design. The city council will be the body that determines the final design of that right-of-way and the entire. Oh, sorry, if there's any, anything that they, that needs to be resolved on that, that will, since it won't affect the design of the lots, this any, any requirements related to the final design of the right-of-way will need to be included in the escrow agreement for the development for the project. Staff recommends as part of that right-of-way design as a condition of approval, that a one-foot pedestrian easement on the south side of the right-of-way, just to the south of the sidewalk needs to be required to be added to the plat, as has been required in prior subdivisions where there was a wider sidewalk. And then on a related note, the parks and recreation director has specified that if the property to the east of the subdivision develops in the future, I will need to have a north-south trail extending near two twenty-five east, which is a part of our trails master plan for the city. So the considerations for the planning commission are, does the proposed subdivision meet the requirements of the applicable city subdivision and zoning ordinances? Is it consistent with the gen, and is it consistent with the general plan? Regarding that general plan, the, this, the, the general plan calls for this property to be developed as low-density residential. And then staff's views that the subdivision meets the requirements of applicable North Ogden city ordinances and conforms to the general plan, but the requirements that are noted in this report. So the recommended conditions of approval from staff are the requirements of the North Ogden city engineers report being met, the requirements of the TRC meeting letter being met, the one-foot easement on the south side of the sidewalk on the south side, it's a five-foot sidewalk being added to the plat. And then that the city council will determine the final design for mountain road and that any requirements relating to that final design will be need to be spelled out in the escrow agreement for the property. Staff recommends that the planning commission grant final approval of the Northview State subdivision phase eight, subject to the conditions that have been recommended in the staff report. I think that covers each of all the material that I have for you. Are there any questions that you have?
Yeah, regarding, regarding mountain road, what about the, we don't have the design for that solidified to to give you guys a lot of good direction on it, but now we were talking about a berm in the middle of it that would have, you know, eight foot, it'd give trees, right? I mean, I didn't hear that being laid out, so we're, so I, can you show at least where mountain road abouts here?
Yes, can you pull up, this is a different exhibit, so can you pull up exhibit B? It basically only hits, it's literally the one lot on mountain road. And so it's just, yeah, right there. So you scroll in on the left-hand portion where that intersection is, those two lots are that are on the, they're the east, but they're the top side of that intersection in this graph. There's maybe, so there's maybe ninety feet worth of mountain road thing.
Or there are a couple lots to the west.
Right, well, so there's a lot, I guess there's a couple lots on the west side of, on the southwest.
I'm not seeing it, sorry.
Yeah, I can get it.
This is mountain road right here. So you got these two lots here and then these two. That's all the frontage they have on map.
So the, regarding the berm in the middle of the road, that whether that occurs or not will be determined. Right.
But if if this development goes in, we don't have real estate to to put that in, is my concern.
There is sufficient right-of-way.
So.
It's eighty-foot right-of-way in there.
It's been designed so that that will fit in it with or without the berm. It wouldn't take up more space because apparently there'll either be that berm or it will be internally.
Okay, there was.
Right, I was just gonna mention the reason the council needs to make the decision is the middle of the road is what the city pays for and the berm is more expensive than asphalt, and so they have to weigh in on whether or not they wanna invest in that infrastructure.
Seems like one of ours.
And the maintenance, yes.
That seems, that's the expensive part.
Yeah.
And I understand we have eighty feet to work with, right? I understand that and that's, that's clear, but I know we were spitballing some ideas of maybe procuring some additional frontage along mountain road, right? So we'd have ninety feet, for example, to work with, or eighty-five feet or something. I just, I just don't wanna limit this with, with this piece of mountain road right in the middle. That's my concern.
Well, right now, all we have in the ordinance is eighty feet, so we can't require more. But you know, my stance on it, eighty is enough. We don't need to be taking more property. So right now, we can't.
Or purchasing more property.
We can't, yeah, the city wants to negotiate by those lots, I guess. It's not something we have the ability to acquire yet. Any other questions for Brandon?
Questions?
Over here, the applicant. Okay. Advocate Cecil, would you like to, something you'd like to address us with?
Well, I don't know if there's any questions. Other than.
Maybe just state your name that you're here representing.
Cecil Satterthwaite, representing Leo Management, developer. And I think the big, biggest thing is that mountain road, we're gonna dedicate the eighty-foot right-of-way and it's up to the city how they want that to be. So we're willing to do whatever you need. I guess my two cents were as far as those, if you do like a center thing, you're looking at maintenance, you're looking at water, if you're planting trees. In my mind, I guess I would say do bike lanes and turning lanes, less maintenance because you plant trees and you're gonna put curb around, you're gonna have center things. It's a fair amount of maintenance, so it's up to you guys. We'll, we'll build it how you want.
So you don't mean.
We're waiting to hear from you guys how to build it, so.
Is mountain road required for accessibility there? Meaning, does that road need to go in for the subdivision to be there?
Well, that, yeah, at least that little part does.
For the frontage of those lots, but it doesn't, it's not required.
You own.
Yes, when we come in on the next several phases, we'll be building mountain road. So.
So I, um, maybe as a developer opinion, then do you see if we do move forward with doing an island and there any issues with driveways that lots back in one of that road?
Well, both, yeah. So you've got driveways, you've got a left turn, right turn, and you're gonna have islands in between. You've got houses there, they're gonna have to come around. So, you know, the islands, they look good. I like the islands, but you have to look at it as a city too. It's like, are you gonna stub a secondary water underneath to water those trees? I mean, what are you gonna do in the center island? I mean, that's something you have to think about. It's maintenance, it's gonna be, for the city, it's gonna cost more.
Yeah.
And we're willing to do, I mean, we'll, we'll design our stuff, we'll build it to what the city wants. But that's something to think.
Yeah, I just wondered if you had any opinion of whether those lots would be difficult to deal with.
Well, they will.
People would pretty much be a ride-in, ride-out only on their driveways.
Yeah, it would be difficult to get in and out, and then you have to look at maintenance too. I mean, if you're gonna stick a trees, trees in there, they look good. I'm, I like that, but you're gonna have to sprinkler it, you're gonna have to water it, you're gonna have to maintain it. It's easier to maintain a left turn, right turn. And it still looks nice. I mean, we'll put trees in the park strip and homeowners keep, really, they do a good job with that stuff, so that's my opinion on that.
I just have, I just have a question, this commissioner Barker.
The park strip, can you describe that a little bit more?
Well, that's up to you guys. I don't know what you're wanting.
Sure.
Neither do we. Neither do we.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm meaning. If you're gonna put a, you know, turn around with curb and put trees or plants, you're gonna have to maintain that. You're gonna have to water it.
Yeah, when I, my, I'm in favor of this, and I know this of of the park strip or the the tree strip down the middle, and not because it's cost-effective or anything, but because it's our, one of our showcase roads, right? Like, I really think this is gonna be a crown jewel of North Ogden, mountain road, as you come up along the mountain and look over the valley and and stuff and so. I think I'm in favor of it, although it's not black and white, and I appreciate the the perspective of.
I, I agree. I, I like those two. Your drive-by South Ogden, they have those. It looks way nice, but is the city willing to maintain that, water it?
Right.
As a developer, do you have ideas of things that are, you know, kind of a sweet spot of what looks nice and also makes sense?
Well, that looks nice, but it doesn't make sense to me as far as the maintenance and the cost. And so I would, I think we do eighty-foot right-of-way, you left turn, right, right turn, do turn lanes, bike lanes. I mean, it's a hard decision.
If if we were to change and say, hey, say the city doesn't wanna take on the cost of that, but would like to have something, and I'm just throwing this out there, we haven't even talked about it, but mentioning trees down the park strips and saying, hey, would you go in and require that as in, you know, one tree per lot that's required to be planted and, you know, obviously it can't be done until the house gets built and maintained, but if that's something that, I mean, if the you kinda help, meaning, I guess, if you, I don't know if we need to make that an ordinance or that becomes something that's in your CCNRs that so it's, the homeowner knows that there's gonna be a tree in front of their house or something like that to kind of.
Well, it's different between a tree in front of their house in the park strip or out in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's gonna be hard to make a homeowner be responsible for that because homes will sell.
Well, yeah, I understand. I just mean, essentially, once you get it installed, people at home, landscape, there, it's gonna get taken care of to some extent, but it's not the guarantee that it is, it's more that at least it gets installed. I've seen a lot of subdivisions where it doesn't have success, and I've seen a lot that homeowners like, I'm not, I don't care about that tree, it's in the city's park strip and.
Right, and that's the question. It's like, we can install it, but we can put trees in there, but who's responsible?
Yeah, the end of the day.
CCNR as a representative.
Well, I think it's, for something like that, it's just really more, maybe John would have more to say with this, but it's more just, so the homeowner knows that there's gonna be a tree in the park strip in front of their house. So, you know, hey, I wanna add one to my driveway, I'm gonna cut that tree down, you know, it's like, just a way to, that they're aware that, hey, that is a required part of the road that needs to be, you know, there.
It's a hard question. It looks nice. I, I do like those medians in the road, they look good, but who maintains them and who keeps them up?
Do you agree this is a showcase road for North Ogden?
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah. And we've got eighty-foot right-of-way all the way through. It's gonna be not really, we have property in place of view, it's gonna go down through there.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, I want it to be nice.
Of course.
It only makes us look better.
Yeah.
We want to do a good job, and if you guys drive up there, then I think we do good stuff. Build good homes, but that's a tricky one. I don't know where you go with that.
All right, I just wanted to hear from you on that, what can.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
More future stuff, for sure.
Thank you, Scott, welcome.
Thank you.
And Rob, I'll miss Rob. I've worked with Brandon and Lauren and Rob, so I'll be working with you. You'll probably get sick of reading that.
I'll be here for it.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, discussion. Well, I guess as normal, we normally do, is there any public that would like to address on this item? I don't, sorry, I don't pay attention to the email online. There's no public here in attendance tonight, so.
We do have a comment from the mayor. He said, how we consider dry scape as water is becoming an issue in the city. Currently, Rice Creek is running about twenty-five percent of capacity.
Yeah, that's actually something we talked about as well as is zero scapeing and we lost a lot of enthusiasm about, I think in our discussions when we talked about being zero scape, it kind of lost its, some of its luster.
It does for some reason, I don't, I can't say why.
Well, I think, you know, there, there's examples to look at, right, that are different, you know, and and obviously this isn't St. George, but, you know, driving out to Ivans and some of that stuff, I mean, that they kind of have it zero scape, so it works in their climate and and it's, it's honestly, it's beautiful, you know? And yet in Vegas, they're like switching things out and swapping things out, but there's, there are creative ideas out there that are water-conscious and maintenance-conscious that, you know, could be interesting to think about.
Anthem Parkway in Vegas, or Henderson really, is like this. I mean, it's bigger, it moves a lot more traffic than we're gonna, right? A lot wider and it's decked with trees in the middle and and both sides, and it's beautiful, and there's grass, and I don't know how they do it down there. But I mean, that is, that is a concern, right? If we have, if we plant lawn there, that's gonna be watered, we gotta maintain sprinklers, I mean, that's the city council's decision, really.
I think in our, at least as the mayor made the comment, at least in our past, as planning commissioner, if I remember, our discussions were the grass and trees look the best and would be ideal if we're willing to take on the cost of maintenance. When we talk zero scape, then we start talking about, does the state looking good or not? Tends to, most zero scape stuff seems to tend to look more aged and not as well-maintained, I don't know if it's because they use it on live with a weed sprayer and figure it's good, you know? And I understand that. But I think the biggest concern is access to the lots and really the cost to the city and the maintenance of whatever goes there. And I would say that, you know, water is maybe the biggest issue because. Is it a true fair cost to burden the entire city with, to take care of a median up there on on that road, when we do really have a lot of other things that need to be.
Mayor, you're gonna have to raise your hand.
I mean, this isn't really the time for this discussion, but I can think of other ways where where both could work, right? Like the, like, we don't have to have driveways, we can have double frontage lots up there, so you access them from the other side and make a butt. The parkway, and and this isn't the discussion for this subdivision necessarily, but I can still think of ways it could, it could happen, I think. And I know, I know we don't have double front, we don't have the ability to do that, I, I know that, I know that. I'm just throwing stuff out there.
Just 'cause it's our only item, we're talking.
Sorry.
Any, do we have any other comments?
We do have a couple comments, but for some reason, their sound is not coming through, so let me figure out why we're not able to hear them.
Do you have the ability to type in the chat, your comment? Those online? Would you like to read them?
You have to make him a presenter, I think.
No, they're all on our, they're all panelists.
Okay.
And they can hear us, we just can't hear them.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
It's the mayor and the other commissioners, yes.
Have you tried to agree?
Yeah, I just. Try talking to get mayor.
Can you hear me? Hear me?
Yeah. Oh, okay, thank you.
Sounds like an echo.
Like an echo.
Thanks for taking my comment, and I agree that the zero scape is is not as natural or good-looking, but I think water is the most important resource we have and with the growth in the city and and the climate changing and us having less and less moisture, I really think long-term that needs to be looked at.
I don't know what the answer is. I, I guess I missed the discussion on that, so I just appreciate all you guys are doing and at least having the discussion, so. Uh, but water, water, I think, is going to be an issue in our city long term.
Yeah, agreed, especially as it gets up there on the hill. Everything on the hill has to be pumped up there, so.
I know, Dave Espinoza was telling me right now, here it is, May, and we're pumping water like we normally do in November and December.
My neighbors.
Check your water lines for leaks.
Yeah, well, we, we're replacing a lot of them.
My toilet might be leaking no luck.
You better check that, that could be a major use of water.
Yeah, I got a notice, and it was, it was stuck open, so.
All right.
Why me? I took extra thousand gallons of water. Any other comments?
Uh, yes. We keep, tend to skim over this real quick by making this a showcase for the city. If it's going to create difficulty, people getting out of their driveway, you're gonna raise major concerns of safety issues, regardless of how good it looks. How wonderful it looks, if it becomes a safety issue, it's not gonna be that wonderful for people living there. And they won't care for the showcase 'cause it'll make it too hard.
Well, I think that's the, what the city council's gotta decide is if they, they wanna take on the burden of taking care of that road. But I agree with you that it is a problem, but that, as we will continue to talk about mountain road and its design, so. Any other comments on the subdivision itself? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I believe the subdivision meets the, uh, the political ordinance, so I move, we approve this item with the, uh, items laid out in the staff report.
I'll say. You have motion, a second, any other discussion? I, I failed to ask Cecil, as we usually do, are you okay with everything that's in the staff report to commit to that? Okay.
Yeah, that was a big question, is the design of mountain road, the cross section. We're willing to do whatever the city.
Must have paid for.
And I put my two cents in.
Yeah, okay.
Do we know it?
Appreciate that.
Chairman, can you tell me who was the second? I can see the second was on there.
All right, any other discussion, the motion? All right, Commissioner Barker, since you're live on TV, we'll pass you. Commissioner Nancaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Armour.
Yes.
Commissioner Mason.
Yes.
Commissioner Webb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lund.
Yes.
My vote, yes.
Commissioner Nancaro did give the two thumbs up, I saw.
That's a double yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Well, being that that's our only agenda item, any other remarks from planning commissioners tonight?
I do have a question to the, for the planning director, or John, or someone, uh, why the city scape, or how the, uh, hillside protection overlay went and why that was tabled, not that I'm disagreeing with that decision, but.
It was just a, just making sure that they were getting all the input from the landowners. There were some landlords who requested some time to, to really make sure they could give some suggestions on changes, I believe.
Okay.
Anything else? I, I do wanna ask, and Mayor, if you're still on, you can pipe in, or John, but have we looked at how to fund the extension of this construction project up to thirty-one hundred, or what's the plan for that?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we. We actually have, I think, uh.
That question is, is it, is it gonna be able to be a continuous thing, like, is it next year kind of a thing, or?
Well, uh, John and Chip in here, I think John did a very good job. We met with, uh, the WACOB folks, with Brooke, who oversees the transportation aspect there. I've been lucky enough to serve on the transportation committee, but they committed basically to let us retain the rental income from the houses we bought. They've allowed us to retain the proceeds from any sale of the lots after, uh, they're built. They have also given us additional money, I think it was about nine hundred thousand dollars that we've overspent on right away, they've agreed to reimburse us there. And they've also allowed us to keep, uh, approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, uh, was assigned to this project, but was a little bit fuzzy on if we could use it, so we believe that we have adequate funds based upon we know now to, uh, complete the project in the near future, uh. Definition of near future is open for discussion, but we think we have a great deal of the money to, uh, complete that up to thirty-one hundred. So.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's, I mean, ultimately, obviously, that's where the next relief or congestion point is that will really help.
Then we've talked to Regency Development, and they've agreed to put in a couple of million, so we think we're there.
Yeah, just, it's on those impact fees, remember? They're, they're on there. Cecil, he's, he's gonna throw in a little there, too.
We'll keep going.
Yeah. You know, we get them building permits going and impact that road, we can build it.
So, I don't wanna belabor the point of mountain road, but I just wanna reiterate my stance on it, that where else in the city do we get this much undeveloped real estate in a blank canvas to design something that's gonna be used so much to move people from east, west across the city? I double down that this is a crown jewel of North Ogden that, uh, needs to be designed well, and, uh, you know, with, with all the competing interests, with the homeowners that have it, with the people that jog on it, with the cars that drive it. And I'd love to see us get a great design and stick to our guns, to the developers, and, and hold them to that standard. Uh, you know, and, and give them a clear, like, Mr. Sallik way here doesn't have clear direction on what to do, right? I'd love to see us lay down something and then have them come up with their creative ways to, to make that work, whether we have double fronted lots there or whatever, I just I, I see that, and where else, you know, without, I mean, look what we're doing Washington Boulevard, right, we're pulling up homes to widen the road, but on mountain road, we have undeveloped mountainside, and I reiterate that, let's do this and let's do this good. Thank you for your time, and I'll get off my soapbox.
All right, I'll, I'll jump on a soapbox right after you. You know, I, I think one thing that we have up there is we have some really unique views of mountains. And, you know, something to maybe creatively consider is how the road moves up and down, you know, that there's, it takes a lot of dirt to, to move things around on a, on a hillside. And, you know, maybe there's some smart ways that as the road moves through there, uh, it can highlight the beautiful topography that we already have. You know, we can think about planning and watering things here. And I, I think it is a crown jewel, I think it needs to be done well, and I completely agree that we need to give clear direction to the developers. Otherwise, it's hard to produce something beautiful if they don't have clarity on that, and that's on us as a city to do that. But one of the ideas that I haven't heard discussed tonight, and maybe it's impossible, is, you know, how are, how can we highlight if someone's driving down the road the, the beautiful mountain views that we have, it's, it's a unique asset that we have here in North Ogden?
You block them with trees. You put trees, they grow trees right on the middle of the road.
Perfect, perfect, you know? And, and maybe there are places where we do want to have some trees, 'cause we wanna soften stuff up there, I mean, the light is harsh up there, things don't grow super well for a reason, and happened for millennia, because.
'Cause you can dig fifty feet in the ground and still find a drop of water.
That's right, and it's rocky, and, you know, but, but how can we, how can we highlight that, you know? Moab's done a heck of a night, you know, heck of a job highlighting the gorgeous topography there that doesn't hold water. And I think we can be creative in North Ogden, and we can figure out ways to highlight that beautiful crown jewel of road and, and our mountains in a way that's unique, you know, but it's gonna take work to do that.
Yeah, I think that's something that we need further the conversation at C and, and make it work harder. You know, like Commissioner Mason said, if it's a matter of, I don't know about double fronted lots, that's just.
Yeah, throwing stuff on the wall.
That's just more expensive, but, you know, even, like what we saw in South Ogden is where they would share driveways. So their side loaded houses or whatever, and shared driveways, so then you could have access, breaks in those islands every, you know, a hundred and fifty feet or ten or eight feet, so at least you got the island effect, and then people could come, go out of their driveways. Notice that up there on Skyline, you know, up there. And that might be, and that's just something that has to really be worked with the developer, if they think that the houses will do well that way. There's some unique challenges we have ahead of us, and fortunately, our new planning director has an expertise in transportation. So. You know, but day, day eight, dump it on him.
My, my point on that was, I just didn't wanna be overswayed by any one factor like safety, I mean. People's lives, right? I, I didn't mean to say that, but, when I stood on, uh, when I stood.
That sounded out of description.
No, I'd like that string from the record, please. I heard it as it was coming out. So, no, but, but honestly, like, you know, I just didn't wanna like, I didn't feel unsafe when we stood on Skyline Drive, I didn't feel like there was a safety issue. And, 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 you know, the developers are always gonna wanna do what's best for the homeowners, but I'm trying to emphasize there that that the users of this, the stakeholders of this road are more than just the people that live along there, and the people who live along there will choose to live along that road, or they'll choose to live elsewhere, but we need to, I think we need to be firm and, and, and come up with a standard and then.
The only, the one difference I will say is that part where we were at a skyline with the median, I don't think handles near the traffic that this road will. Because this road is gonna connect to eighty-nine up by the freeway, and it will give the ability to everything on the branch to help out the freeway and so. It has the ability to be a much higher use road than what we have on Skyline.
Which is what I brought up ninety feet at the beginning of the meeting. And I know, I know, I don't, I know, I just want, buy in the sky, and I think I want it all, right, but.
We'll just put trams and.
Would, would the city, you know, if, since we're throwing stuff on the wall, if there was a ninety feet situation, you know? Do, do, does the city have the ability to not require a ten thousand square foot lot on those particular lots? Could there be a, an agreement to where, 'cause, 'cause there are some people who are like.
Then you're gonna just magnify the problem of having more driveways to deal with. Like the smaller lots, more raises and more driveways to come into that.
Well, if the frontage was the same, and their backyards were a little more shallow, you know, some people are happy with an eight thousand square foot lot.
You can't, you can't do that on the hill because.
That's true, that's true, yep, that makes sense.
So, unfortunately, on the hill, it's better to have narrower lots and deeper because of the elevation changes to deal with.
Yeah, yeah, that makes complete sense.
But there is a section that Cecil, while you're in here, the, the school owns a big chunk up there, right?
Yes.
Does mountain road border their property, or are you gonna have lots between them and the school?
No, there's lots between mountain road and the school, but only one lot.
And we get them to buy that lot, and then the road confronts the school property, and it's less driveways to deal with. Like, shift them up, I don't know how we do that, but.
Maybe so, I mean.
And, and just as your future plans look at, maybe if there's a possibility to make an adjustment, 'cause that would help, obviously, a school.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
Driveway accesses onto that road. The five hundred thousand feet of that school property is.
School buses coming off of that road to the, yeah.
One lot.
But I haven't talked to them for a little while, they've, they've changed people that I used to work with, and we've got a new guy there, and I haven't met with him yet.
It's probably on the docket for twenty fifty-five or twenty seventy-five.
So he used to be Drew Wilson, and we worked with him on a lot of stuff, and they've got a new guy, I, I, it's on my list.
Is that a junior high?
I think it's.
Or your elementary.
Elementary. Yeah, elementary.
Again, safety shouldn't be a concern. Please, let's hit that out of our minds.
Seventy-five, we're gonna have road. Let's get the people out of there.
No, it's, it's hard to decide what you wanna do with mountain road. I'm in agreement with all you guys as far as wanting to make it a nice road.
Yeah.
Because it only helps us. But what you do with it, I mean, there's, you can go back and forth on all kinds of different ideas, so I don't know the best.
Well, I think, could you at least look at shifting the road to where it borders their property, or get them to shift their property so that we don't have all this, I mean, the more driveways we can eliminate on it, the better, I think, so.
That's possible, I'll take that.
Maybe we have an island in front of their property, and that's it, because there are no driveways.
Yeah, that's true.
Crown jewel of six hundred feet. The jewel in the crown.
There you go, there you go.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? Report from our planning director, all right?
So, I, just a few things to report in my short time I've been here. One is a, a reminder, I actually don't know if the notice went out to you guys, or if it did, but June first is a, a scheduled joint work session, city council and planning commission. So, eleven days out from that, we've got a, a few ideas on there, one is, uh, housing presentation, and then looking at some land use training. So, one of the things that changed with Utah State Legislature this year are training requirements for planning commission members, so now you must have at least one hour of training before you make any decisions as a planning commission member, which seems reasonable. And then four hours of training annually, which gives us a compressed timeframe for this year, we have now to December thirty-first to complete four hours of training, and that can come in a number of ways. Uh, we can do it through joint work sessions, we can have staff training, you can do, uh, qualified online training, we can send you to conferences, there's a, a bunch of ways, four hours is real easy to get, especially in the era of Zoom. And with the Utah Land Use Institute stuff that they've got going on, so there's a number of, of training videos, so.
So, on that joint session, was that where we met in earlier, or we still just meet at six thirty, and that's a two, well, that's a Tuesday. So, are we, okay.
And, and we'll do it like we've done in the past, where the, 'cause I think the council will have some things, but we'll do the planning commission joint session first, so that you'll have a, a drop dead when you're out of there, and then the, the council will continue on into the night.
Okay, so that's at six P M?
Is that what it deals with the class?
I don't know.
Sunday and probably.
So. So then we, we've also got a handful of things going on, so one is the code rewrite, and of course, our, our great state legislature has just thrown this whole bunch of changes, so there's gonna be some timing to figure out between the, the code rewrite and reorganization as it really is, there's a handful of changes and updates that they're making, but from what I understand, talking to the law and the consultant, is it's a reorganization of our codes. Uh, that contract is nearly at the end of its expenses, essentially, and so we need to decide whether we do some, what we come, you know, contract extension, there's some discussions I gotta have with John about, how much do we wanna pull in from the legislative updates into our code changes? And there were some requirements for us to look at. You can no longer limit design standards or, or impose design standards on certain residential types of housing, and that includes place, placement of the garage, facade front types and materials, all sorts of things. And, and then we have some decisions to make around accessory dwelling units, so the state legislature permitted the cities to limit in certain residential areas accessory dwelling units down to only seventy-five percent of the land area within those zones. So we can make the call of whether or not we permit them, if you're in R one-ten zone, if it's a hundred percent of that zone, or seventy-five percent of it, and what that looks like. Uh, there were some concerns from planners across the state that that might be exclusionary zoning, so I think you have to be careful how you craft that and word it, and track it. So we've got some decisions to make there, but, um, handful of code changes that'll happen post, probably the code rewrite. You'll feel like we're doing lots of code work, but I think in reality, we're just coming up to requirements of the legislature. Then I had an idea, so mountain road, you know, I've, I've driven sections of mountain road, I'm familiar with it, I've spent on the Wasatch Front Regional Council long range plan for a really long time, and you, you could make that the crown jewel, or the city could look at, maybe it's, it's time to look at a, a holistic street trees ordinance for the city. And you can codify those, they've got to be certain spacing, they've got to be planted at two inch caliber, and when one dies, it's a, it's an ordinance, it's a coenforcement issue that homeowner has to replant one. Uh, Salt Lake City has a number of programs where they'll come out, they'll apply to the tree, they'll help you plant it, you commit to water it, if you kill it within seventy months or the first year, you replace it. But then it's essentially no cost, but that's how you get that tree lined streets throughout your whole city, as opposed to putting a, a lot of focus on a single right away, and you kind of get that spread out across multiple developments and areas, and, uh, and it's a commitment. So farming, I worked for Davis County and Farmington City and the iconic main street farming tree trees, those are maintained by the city. And so they, they go out, they do leaf cleaning up, they, they, one gets sick, they're out there doing the really expensive fixes for those trees and you essentially can't touch them as a homeowner. It's just a known issue that every fall you're going to have a foot of leaves. They just rake into the road and they, and a street sweeper a few times a month. So lots of options and they have to think about. And that's all tonight. Looking forward to it. It's really great staff. Excited to have Brandon and Kai here and and help spread the load across the planning department and step up and bring you guys items as well, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Go on.
Uh, just one more update on something that you saw a couple of weeks ago, the the building shift over at Village of Proctor, not at Patriot Point. But we also need to ban Point View Mountain. What are the other things when you dislinate from subdivisions? Anyways, the council the, the application was quasi pulled from the council, but it's back on Tuesday. And so just, we'll give you an update on what happens from there. And we do still have a couple of those other projects that you've approved coming, 711 Cooperstown. Not that you, you'll be involved in any more approvals. I think actually Cooperstown you will, but just things are still moving. People are obviously still building houses. And we still have probably more applications in the works than we've ever had before. Building permits especially are just through the roof, so. Anyways, if any of you wants to be a building inspector, it's the right time to join the field, so. But yeah, we'll, we'll get the training all scheduled and I think one thing that's nice is if you attend 12 meetings a year, planning commission meetings, that counts for one hour of training. And I think as most of you know, Rob was really adamant about sitting you down and talking with you before you ever came to a planning commission meeting. And that would have, that type of thing is what we would call that hour of training before you, whoever voted. So even though it, it wasn't a current requirement when you signed on, you basically got the, the training that you would have received anyways.
John, the most valuable training I've had since I've been on the planning commission was probably the time we spent in Moab, honestly. And that includes the National Bank Convention. I learned a lot there too. I felt like I became a better planner, planning commissioner at, at that point, but the Moab time and then the ability to sit with that lady after and then kind of just talk about stuff together in like a retreat forum, that was, that was super valuable.
And that's very helpful feedback because one, one thing, you know, with, with all of everyone's experience and, and connections, we have access to a lot of experts across the state. You know, Meg Ryan, who did that training for us, there is our hearing officer for the city.
You know, it seems like, oh, Mason just likes to get a junket and go to Moab, which is also true. But, you know, we have opportunities sometimes to get trained in Brigham City, Salt Lake, and I've tried to break away and go to a few of those and my life around here just kind of pulls me back in, right? And I say the same thing to my work, you know, when they offer virtual conferences and stuff like, I just don't get the focus that you get when you pack up and I thought Moab was the right distance to kind of make it a commitment to the people who went to buckle down and train. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I thought that was fantastic.
And I think it was, you know, as training goes, good value for the dollar, meaning that lots of intense stuff, good content and close and, you know, hotels weren't expensive. There weren't flights. It was, it worked out pretty good. We didn't hit any deer on the way down, right, Commissioner? So it was, it's, you know, but it's the state, the state APA does a really good job of training. They, they put a lot of time into it. It, it really is one of the better programs that I've seen, so.
But in addition, in addition to that, the, like, the, just the being together and just the bond is as we go on a hike or eat pizza or whatever, it was, I thought valuable. So I'd like to see some, that return eventually. While I'm still on the planning commission.
Okay, and that's all I have. I agree, so.
All right, thank you. Motion for adjournment? We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You two thumbs up for opposed? All right, okay, now Commissioner Mason's going to start us off with an hour of training.